Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order. It's June the 18th, 2020, 7:00 PM. So, the first item is the devotion and Councilman Binnell is going to do that portion.
Let's stand for Bill. Stand for God and we'll stand for the flag. It's your name standing. Father, we just thank you for this thing. We're so blessed to live in America, so we thank you for all the blessings that we enjoy. Thankful living in a peaceful little town like we live in, but our heart goes out for all the turmoil that's going on in America. I pray that current is will prevail and some of this stuff can be resolved. Pray for protection for police, watch over them, watch over our peace. Father, we ask you to forgive us of our sins, that you would watch over us. Give us a good meeting tonight, let me make good decisions that will be proper for the city. Remember the people that are lost, they be saved. And so many people are dealing with the COVID that I pray for their healing and I pray that that will come to an end very shortly. It's all in your hands, God, like everything is. So forgive us of our sins, keep us humble, Christ's name, pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeson, do you have a call for roll, please?
Toni Binnell?
Here.
Doug Brown?
Here.
Rita Carter?
Here.
Jerry Kirkman?
Here.
David Lee?
Here.
Chandler Holbrook?
Here.
Let the record show that everyone is present. We have informed, so we're ready to move on. The first item on the agenda is, or next item is to adopt the agenda. And I think we have a change request.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we do the due process right after public comments and take care of that, and then we pick back up on the agenda after that.
If everyone's in agreement with that, and also I'll work the public hearings in for the ordinance and ordinance readings as we get to votes, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Sir. I have a motion by Councilman Binnell, a second by Councilman Lee. Any other discussion? All in favor of a motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is for public comments. We have one public comment from Ms. Patricia Hawkes.
Just take them there if you want to.
So I wanted to talk to y'all about the rezoning on Mill Street. You know, we don't have a problem with any kind of development or anything that's going in, but I just want you all to take into consideration that the road is not wide enough for two cars to pass each other, it's barely wide enough for one. So if you're going to rezone it for multiple family dwellings, somebody's got to foot the bill to widen the road. So y'all might want to consider that before, because there's no way you can, you can't even try to truck around down there, or trash truck backs down the road. So that's the only problem that we have with it. Just want to keep that in mind, that something's got to be done with the road. We're going to add a bunch more cars. Okay?
And I note that if this does pass tonight on first reading, there will be a public hearing before second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is the minutes from the May 21st, 2020 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May 21st, please.
Second. A motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Binnell to accept the minutes as read. We're open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect it carries unanimously. Next item is the May 2020 financial statement.
I move to accept the May financial statement as presented.
Second. A motion by Councilman, Councilman Warren Carter and a second by Councilman Brown to accept the financial statement. We are open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Keeson, do you have a call for roll?
Well, Kristen? Yes. Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Binnell?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carrying she has. Okay, we will move now to the matter of Police Officer Carl Moriarty. I'll turn that now. I guess does John, does the chief need to speak first, or we need to go ahead and do the due process here?
Well, that's part of the due process. And what we've done in the past is we've let the chief tell the council why he's done, what he's done, what his recommendation is, and we've let the person that's involved put on whatever defense they'd like to, and the council can ask questions, it'll be the one of them, so.
Mayor, do you want to hand that? Do you want to hand that?
Yeah.
Back here if you want to, we'll leave it all there.
That might be better. Mayor, you can just kind of turn around there and you can see, is there a mouse before the head that way?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Subject that I want to discuss with you tonight is involving Officer Carl Moriarty. Officer Moriarty is a full-time employee with the Westmoreland Police Department. Now, purpose of this due process hearing tonight before y'all is involving the firearms qualification in which Officer Carl Moriarty failed to meet his qualifications. On April the 17th, 2020, Officer Moriarty was to report to the Westmoreland Gun Range to qualify with his department-issued weapon that is required by each officer every year with the department. You've got to qualify with your department-issued weapon. On April the 17th, Officer Moriarty did show up as he was instructed to begin his firearms training at the Westmoreland Police Department Gun Range. On that day, April the 17th, Officer Moriarty proceeded to qualify with his department-issued weapon. At that point, he was issued 50 rounds, and that's a standard issue amount for each officer to do their qualification course. Officer Moriarty shot his first rounds and he failed to qualify on that day. Also on that same date, being April the 17th, Officer Moriarty was given four more opportunities for remedial training that day, and if he needed help with his issue that allowed him not to qualify, that was four more chances that was given to him. Even with him shooting four more times that day, he still failed to meet an 80% proficiency that is required by all Westmoreland Police Department officers. Officer Moriarty was given more time to practice and was advised to take this time and practice to better qualify with his weapon at another scheduled date and time. Officer Moriarty went to, I know one time, went to Sergeant Ken Whitty's house for, from my understanding, approximately maybe two or three hours and shot an unknown amount of ammo at that location, and he was advised if he needed further assistance to ask for it and we would provide it for him. Officer Moriarty was brought back on the date of May the 30th, which was approximately six weeks from the first opportunity that Officer Moriarty had to shoot to re-qualify the second time. On May the 30th, Officer Moriarty showed back up at the gun range and failed to qualify or failed to receive the 80% proficiency with his department-issued as required by our department policy and procedures. Officer Moriarty was instructed to meet me in my office on June the 1st, and which Officer Moriarty did show up on June the 1st, and we had a meeting in my office. At that point, Officer Moriarty was suspended for one week to get some more training and to better be proficient with his department-issued weapon. He was to report after that one week, he was to report on June the 6th. This would be his third and final chance to qualify with his department-issued weapon. On that day, Officer Moriarty failed once again to qualify with his duty weapon. Officer Moriarty was instructed to meet me once again in my office on June the 8th. Officer Moriarty did follow through with his commitment. He did meet me on June the 8th, once again, in my office, where I discussed with Officer Moriarty his issues of not qualifying with his department weapon. And at that point, after her speaking with him, upon me speaking with him, I advised Officer Moriarty that he was on suspension once again until he was brought before the city council, and he is subject to be terminated for failure to maintain his qualifying standards. I also on that day gave Officer Moriarty a chance or opportunity to resign from the department based on those reasons that he couldn't qualify with his department-issued weapon. Officer Moriarty advised me that he refused to resign, and at that point, he wanted and he asked me, being Chief Flatt, to take him before the city council for termination purposes. On June the 8th, also, Officer Moriarty did carry in all of his department equipment belonging to the city and also to the police department that was issued to him on his first day of employment with the Westmoreland Police Department. Officer Moriarty, during these meetings, they, I did audio and record each and every meeting that Officer Moriarty and I had. During one of those meetings, Officer Moriarty stated that he didn't feel that he received the remedial training that he need or wasn't offered enough ammo to be, to get his 80% proficiency. I can account for 300 rounds of department issued that Officer Moriarty was given through the department, in which after those 300 rounds, he still failed to maintain that 80% proficiency as required by our policy and procedure. I do know that Officer Moriarty went, like I said, to Sergeant Whitty's residence, unknown how much rounds that he discharged there. I know that Officer Moriarty did attend a school in Galton where he practiced some more in a indoor shooting range. Once again, unknown how many rounds of ammo that was used in those scenarios. And I bring him before y'all tonight, Chapter 8 of our policy and procedure, 8.59, there's subsection A, B, C, and D. Subsection A states that according to a policy and procedure, that each Westmoreland officer has got to meet post standards or and meet the requirements set forth by the Westmoreland Police Department's standards, which is 80% proficiency with their duty weapon. Subsection, subsection B in that policy and procedure gets where it is left up to me to suspend the officer that cannot or fails to make the qualification score. And after the one week suspension, and he still fails, it is my job to bring him before the city council for termination for failure to maintain standards. Section D in there is the minimum standard for all Westmoreland officers, and that is 80% proficiency with their department issue. This is my proof, this is my evidence that I presented to each and every one of y'all involving Officer Carl Moriarty. And I do have two of Officer Moriarty's targets that is used by each officer of the Westmoreland Police Department for y'all's view. If y'all wish, I'll leave that up to y'all, but that is my case. If y'all have any questions for me, I will answer them.
What was his highest score?
A 40%.
40%.
Uh huh. That occurred on June the 6th, which was his third and final time to qualify with his duty weapon. The second time, the second target that I have in my possession that was shot by Officer Moriarty was 22% on May the 30th. The reason I don't have the first target, just in case questions come about, is we didn't keep the first target or his score. Reason was because we know that Officer Moriarty needed more remedial training and would have to come back to re-qualify. So that's the basis why we didn't keep the first target.
Chief, how often do your officers have to re-qualify?
They re-quali, they are, they shoot once a year. They qualify once a year.
And all of the other police officers in the police force have met the 80% requirement? I said, have all the other officers each year met the 80% requirement?
Yes, sir. If they don't, then they're off of remedial training, and usually the second go around, they meet that, yes.
How long has Officer Moriarty worked for Westmoreland?
Oh.
Six months.
Yeah, I was fixing to say six or seven.
So he's never passed a proficiency test, though?
Not with the Westmoreland Police Department. April the 17th was our first day to meet at the range to qualify.
Chief Flatt?
Yes.
What is the Tennessee State Post requirement, their percentage?
The Post requires a 75%, but also each department is allowed to set a percentage at their discretion. So each department, I know some departments out there have an 85% proficiency, 90% proficiency, and that's left up to each individual department.
Sergeant, you're a certified trainer, firearms trainer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you were present each time that he went through this?
Yes, I was. And so was Ray Alton Connor, who was also a major.
He was, okay. Chief Flatt, the reason that the, oh, the first training was Friday, April 17th, why was there a big, a large gap between Friday, April 17th and May 30th? Was that to make sure that Officer Moriarty had efficient time to go through remedial training and things of that nature, or is that just, or do you have to set a certain amount of time before you can go back to re-qualify?
The reason that was, Councilman Brown, was we had some weather issues and some other things that come about that enabled us to get it any closer, and that was the way it failed those six weeks. And to answer the second part of your question, wanted to allot them enough time where they can say that they didn't have enough time to practice on their own after being instructed and such.
Can you speak to that? Because Officer Carl Moriarty was not the only officer that had failed on April 17th, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But the all others passed on May 30th?
The other passed on June the 6th.
Okay.
They, both of those, Officer Mancino and Officer Burdoff, received an 80% proficiency that was reported to me by Sergeant Whitty, the training and range master.
Chief, what's the probationary period for police officers? Do you have a probationary period when you hire a new officer?
Three months. We get, you get your benefits and your take-home car unless there's a certain stipulation, like if we have an officer that becomes a K-9 officer and we need, he needs that K-9 car and we, there's discrepancies in there, we may give that officer a vehicle security due to those circumstances.
Yeah, I would suggest you seriously consider, the council should consider longer probation period.
It has been.
Most cities have a minimum of six-month probation where you don't have, you don't have to go through a due process hearing or anything else if we're in that period. Often it's a year probation that has the same rule, so just, just for future information sake, I think it's something, so three months is a very short period of time.
That has been, that has been discussed. Mr. Brady? Yes?
Do you have any other witnesses you'd like to call?
None, sir.
None, sir.
Other than, if y'all have something for training Officer Range Master Sergeant Whitty that I didn't answer, or?
Can the panel have a question for Sergeant Whitty?
I would like to state your targets. If you could.
Is that bold, hold on a minute?
This target that I'm holding in front of you is the June the 6th, and this is the 40%. This is the first one. This is the standardized target that we use. And also, Officer Moriarty stated that we use the red and we use the gray. Anything in that is good. Anything out of that is out. We also went to the extremes where no officer can say, if I shot, you added all these outside the gray and the red up, I would have passed. I went through this, and Sergeant Whitty went through each officer's individual target and counted the ones outside the gray and red to just show them if they, we counted everything. They still wanting them a 80%. And on these targets, both of them, there's anywhere from 25, 18 to 25 rounds out of 50 that ain't even on paper. So we don't know, them rounds went beyond this scope of paper.
Chief, what's the distance on the fire, on the shots?
22 yards is a footers.
Good.
And we go up to the nine yards?
Three yards.
Three yard line, nine feet.
And what handgun were these guns you qualified with?
A Glock 22, which is a 40 caliber. That's what most of your police department, law enforcement offices carry. That is the department-issued weapon? That is a department-issued weapon. That is correct.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Chief Flatt, Mr. Moriarty?
No, I don't.
Have any questions for Mr. Whitty?
No, I don't.
Anybody, do you want to make a presentation to the council?
No.
Do you have any statement tonight?
No.
Does anybody on the council have a question for Officer Moriarty?
I have one. When was the last time you qualified wherever you were a police officer previously?
I qualified at Tennessee State University. We carried an H&R Smith &amp; Wesson .40 cal. I qualified every year with 80 or better. This is the first year I fired a weapon with the grading system that they have. Every place I've been, if you were within the black of the target and inside, your
If I may, just for the record, when we submit our lesson plan for firearms or anything else, we submit it to Tennessee Post Administration, they have to approve it or else I can't do that plan. We put it in there with the 80 percentile and everything else, and they approve the plan. So the standards are 75% by the state, has to be at least 75. We can make it stronger if we wish, and we do, because we believe proficiency is extremely important if we have to pull that trigger.
Sergeant, Mr. Moriarty told the council, or I saw somewhere he submitted something that said, Post had a less requirement, I think the Post required 75%.
75%, yes. That's the minimum standard for a Post.
Did Mr. Moriarty ever reach a 75% level?
Even if I counted in the black? No, sir.
Even if you counted in the black?
Yes, sir. Even if I counted the black, he did not meet that.
Does Post count the black or just the gray rating?
They have different targets, so they'll plan to count some of the black areas.
Sure.
Again, like you say, we submit our targets smaller because if God forbid, we have to take that ultimate shot. We want to make sure we know where it's at.
Can the panel have any questions?
Officer Moriarty, what, what do you, what's the reason that you have that you, that you believe that you didn't qualify for these opportunities?
This is a newer training that we did, where you start at the front of a car and you shoot so many rounds, you go behind the car and shoot so many rounds, you go over the barrels and lean one way and shoot so many rounds, you go over another barrel leaning a certain way. So it was a whole, it was a whole new.
So you've never been, you've never been subjected to that type of training, is what you're saying?
Right.
How many total rounds do you think you shot during all this process? You said 300 at one place and you had 50. You said three hundred at one place and you had fifty or other, so you practiced a lot, is what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Chief, what is your recommendation for the council?
Based on the amount of times that Officer Moriarty was given, based on the amount of rounds that Officer Moriarty, uh, shot, I feel that he still won't make the eighty percent proficiency. If we prolonged it, he still wouldn't make it. And based on the evidence that I presented to y'all, it is my recommendation that Officer Moriarty be terminated for those reasons with the Westmore Police Department. Because not only, uh, it, it becomes, when we get that, and we always hope it never comes, but we don't never know when we're gonna have to take somebody's life. And based on the evidence that I have in front of me and I have showed y'all, and at least probably two months of shooting multiple rounds, multiple, and still not improving with that amount of rounds and, and that time, I feel that Officer Moriarty, at this point in time, is a liability to the department based on those facts and the evidence that I have before me and have shown y'all.
Up to the council.
I would like to say something onto that. Shooting a paper target is a whole lot different than shooting a human being. I've worked at a university where it was bad, and I've had to pull my weapon on several occasions, and I can thank the good Lord, I never had to fire. I was involved in a situation here with a fellow officer, a well-not-named, when it got bad, gunfire did erupt, the officer hit everything but the suspect. So shooting a suspect to a paper target is a whole different ballgame.
Mr. Murray, I'll make the motion to, uh, accept Chief Flat's recommendation of Officer Moriarty's termination.
I'll second that. We have a motion by the Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Bento, to accept the recommendation of Chief Flat for the termination of Officer Moriarty for failure to meet qualifications at the range. Any other discussion?
I think according to our policy procedure, we've got no choice. And I, I sort of disagree with, with Officer, it's easier to shoot at a target than it is to shoot a human being, and that's my, I've been there. It's about easier to shoot a target than it is in real life, so that's my opinion.
Any other discussion? What is concerned for me is if you, you know, if you have an officer who is not qualified, uh, with whatever qualification that they need to be, whether it be, uh, whether it be a, their standard issue weapon, uh, taser and whatnot, and you have an incident that takes place, and we're well aware of a climate that we're in now where law enforcement officers are under scrutiny, and if we have a situation where something occurs and they're gonna go back, the very first thing that's gonna occur is that they're gonna go back and pull proficiency, accounts, and, and, and look at accountability. And unfortunately, that's, that's where we are. And so it's, it, it does put the city in a tough spot. I, I'm not for terminating any police officers, but unfortunately, we're in a position where we have to make that type of decision.
This case should be called the roll and bring.
Carter?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let's rec, reflect the motion, carry unanimously. Okay, uh, does the council want to go up now and pick up the, uh, the budget ordinance? Or do you want to?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When will I get a copy of my termination?
Soon as the recorder can get it ready and.
Will I mail it in?
Okay. I've, I've got two forms of paper that I need you to sign, Officer Moriarty, and I'll turn that over to the city, the city recorder, and when she's ready, she'll notify you.
All right. Okay, one other order of business before we move on from that is the actions of paying him during his suspended time. I need a motion for that.
Yeah, you would do a motion for that.
Yeah, make a motion to.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to pay Officer Moriarty, why he's on suspension.
I'll see.
On, until this day?
To this day, yes.
I'll see.
And we have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Brown, to pay Officer Moriarty from the time he was suspended up until today's termination date. Any discussions?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion, carry unanimously.
I would just suggest, whatever paperwork he's given that you point out in there, that subsequent to the termination, the council voted unanimously to pay him up through today's day.
I will place a section in there, I'll write it in there and give it to him and wait for his signing.
Thank you, Chief.
He needs to do his last check. Thank you, council. Yeah, this will, uh, will move to the, uh, to the budget ordinance.
Are you gonna do the old business first?
Um, going back up to the, let's see, uh, okay, I said budget, budget or, budget ordinance, excuse me, ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash three, the second reading of the city code amendment.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash three on second and final reading.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman, Councilwoman Carter, a second by Councilman Bell, to approve on second reading the city code amendment, oh five twenty twenty dash three. We're open for discussion. Okay, hearing done.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion, carry unanimously. Next item is second reading of ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash four. It's an update to the Policy and Procedures Amendment. And this will be second reading.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero five two zero two zero dash four for second reading.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. We're open for discussion.
So this will take care of our problem we've had in the last year or so, uh, when an employee's placed on administrative leave, it's without pay now, pending investigation. And after the investigation, if, uh, they're still employed, we will pay back the pay. Is that correct?
Say what, Mr. Bradley?
As long as I did this, I don't remember. Mr. Bradley, I would defer to him. I would defer to him.
Yes, I, it is.
It's not that much.
I was just trying to do it in a nutshell.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, before we voted, we're talking about, uh, uh, policy and procedures, if it'd be a good opportunity for us to slip an amendment in there to end or a notation at the end of the ordinance, also saying we wanted to increase the, uh, probationary time to six months. We, we had discussed it, but it didn't make it in the ordinance as written.
You don't have a police policy and procedure manual, do you, here, Chief Flat?
No, ma'am.
I know the benefit starts at three months, but I was thinking the other was six months.
I know we discussed it. I don't know if we ever laid it down.
We never did vote on it. We discussed it, that, that it was never a vote, uh, under Chief of Malpatano. I know it's, we've talked about it, but to my knowledge, we, we've never had a reading or, or vote on it.
Mr. Bradley, that'd be something that, you mentioned that earlier, about six months probationary period, was that something that all employees usually abide by in the city? Not just police officers, but?
It's a possibility that's with the police officers.
Right.
And, for example, in Hendersonville, it's routine for the chief of police to extend that probation from six months to a year for new officers, because so often they'll have all the things done in a six-month that they need to do to be sure that they're gonna make it, and so they extend it to a year. And so if, if further on probation is a problem, you don't have any hearing or anything else. It's just, it's just a unilateral decision by the chief to, to make that. And, and on this particular thing, I, I thought that it was exactly what, what you said. It says the employee may be placed on administrative leave without pay, but ultimately it gives the authority to this body, then later to decide whether it should have been with or without pay if you have to.
Right.
Often someone will resign, you may not even have to make that determination.
Right.
Uh, so just to say that it's not mandatory and it's, it's permissive, that it can be without pay. I think it's probably better to look at the probation thing in the context of overall package of all employees, and probably not in the context of this one thing here, because this has to do with punishment rather than hiring an eligibility for benefits. Maybe we can have that on the work, maybe might put that on the work study for next week's day to look at that, if everybody.
I'll go there.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion, carry unanimously. We'll move now to the, uh, budget ordinance, zero five two zero two zero dash one, from year twenty twenty-one budget. I think we, uh, that will be for second reading. I believe we're gonna have some updates to it tonight, so we will discuss those updates prior to the hearing.
You gonna open the public hearing?
No, we'll go ahead and discuss, uh, what we're gonna do with the budget, and then I'll have the hearing before the vote.
Thought they spoke to us before the hearing.
You're gonna make changes to it tonight, and am I correct?
We'll have to have a motion and second before we discuss it, though.
Yes.
Is your lawyer on the public hearing for me?
Yeah, that's gonna let us discuss the budget before we did the public hearing, and then, then before the vote, I will have the public hearing. Because if you make changes, then, I, I don't even know if we have anybody out there who wants to.
The order we've got on the agenda that was adopted has the public hearing, probably.
Yeah.
And, and, and the idea of the public hearing, so the public can speak before they discuss it, so they can make some changes they can, so it's probably better if we go ahead and have the public hearing.
Okay. We will open the, uh, public hearing for the ordinance, uh, zero five two zero two zero dash one, because of year twenty twenty-one budget, uh, anyone wishing to speak? And I understand there's no one outside.
There's no one out there who wants to speak in the public hearing? No one in here that wants to speak in the public hearing?
The time is, um, what, uh, seven forty-six?
I guess it matters when we have it.
I didn't know.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now, and, uh, then we'll open the public hearing for the tax rate, which is ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash four, excuse me, zero five two zero two zero dash two, the twenty twenty-one tax rate. Is anyone to speak to the tax rate? Okay, so we'll close that public hearing. Now, if I can get a motion for ordinance number zero five two zero two zero dash one for twenty twenty-one budget, we'll start on it.
I make a motion to amend, we've got to amend first, ordinance zero five?
They're gonna get it on the floor first, so first make a motion to pass, and then make a motion to amend it. Because it's gotta be on the floor for amendment, so make a motion to, to, to pass the budget.
Yeah, but there's been some changes to it between.
I know, but you'll get to that, but you make a motion to pass the ordinance, and then we can, then we can amend it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash one, second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
And then what I was gonna say was, because some changes have been made since first reading, now you're making a motion to amend, to incorporate the budget ordinance to be as it's presented to the council, not with the changes from the study session.
Okay, then I make a motion to amend ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash one, from the reading passed on May the twenty-first, to the budget presented in the council package as version three.
Have an amendment presented by Councilwoman Carter, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. We're open for discussion on it, or do you have discussion on it?
Yeah, you would, I mean, but this is what, I think everybody had agreed to at the study session, so this is the, this is just a housekeeping thing to say that once before you incorporate those references, those changes.
Any discussion?
And it, it was the changes to the extra dollar for the police officers, the police department, that we discussed at the work study.
And that's incorporated what's before you tonight, right?
Right.
This case?
That's making a total of the two dollars. Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Carter? Yes.
Let the record reflect the amendment, passes unanimously. Now we'll move back to the original motion of the ordinance itself.
I will make another motion to amend ordinance zero five two zero two zero dash one, to include the following changes. And these numbers is based on the request from our public works supervisor. He would like to have the additional dollar as well that the, as the police officer, police department, uh, requested. Uh, this is, you know, I believe, uh, let me just give you the numbers that we can discuss, okay? There would be general fund. There would be general fund would be an increase of five sixty, streets would be a thousand seven ninety-four, sanitation, four thousand one fifty-five, water, seven thousand one fifty-five, and sewer, seven thousand four oh five. And after the second, I will state one.
Second. A motion for a second number of amendment by Councilwoman Carter, second by Councilwoman Bell. General fund was, would you repeat those numbers, fifty-six oh one?
No. Five hundred and sixty dollars.
Sixty?
Streets, one thousand seven ninety-four. Sanitation, four thousand one fifty-five. Water, seven thousand one fifty-five. What did I say on sanitation? Four thousand one fifty-five. I repeated, seven thousand one. Sewer, seven thousand four oh five. And I can break those down for you. And the reasoning was, I think all of us received the email from Public Works Supervisor, Aaron Sizemore, after the work study, where we discussed where Chief Lat came forth for the additional dollar for his officers, and we so granted it. And Aaron has requested the same for his department, which would include water and sewer, all, I would include all the public work guys, regardless if they work at the sewer plant or where they work. And he, his reason stated was to get his department pay scale and competitive range with all the surrounding cities, and he gave us a breakdown of some of the surrounding cities in that email. So I would just like to see us make same accommodation for public works as we did for the police department.
I'm guessing we'll then get into budget ordinance with those numbers.
I, I have each line item broken down, if you need that. If you all want to hear that.
Councilwoman, go through those now?
Pardon me?
I was asking if council want to go through that now, or?
There were any motion, weren't there?
The total, it was, but I have each line item broken down.
What does it make our total budget now?
Well, each department's going to be different. Which one are you talking about?
General fund, you said it would increase it by five sixty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was trying to get a rough idea, someone calls tomorrow and asks about it, what it would be.
It would be one million, seven eighty-one, nine eighty-four total in general fund. And this five sixty, the numbers that I'm quoting would incorporate Social Security and, well, there won't be any retirement, because only ten percent of the supervisor's pay comes out of the public service. The other ninety percent comes out of water, and his benefits comes out of water.
Are we in the portion? Okay, I have a quick question. Did the raise, that does affect salary people then, too? Am I correct?
Yes, we did with the police department, and I had salary included.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And at this point.
Because they're not paid by hours, I didn't know how that worked with them.
Yeah. But when we were doing the numbers, I broke their salary down by hour, so we could get all the numbers in.
Do we, do we get also possible overtime, to get an estimate?
No, because overtime is a different line item, so it's hard to figure on that. I mean, you can if you want to. And all setting number would be to make your expenses balance, they're doing, taking it from the fund balance like we did with the police department. And in your enterprise accounts, which is your, your water and sewer, basically, their fund balance is your, your net change. And in our audit for this past year, 2019, our net change in net position was four hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine twenty-nine. Out of that four twenty-eight, nine twenty-nine, it included depreciation for water of a hundred and fifty thousand four ninety-four, and depreciation for sewer, a hundred and forty-six thousand six ninety-six. And we still came out to the good of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine twenty-nine. So as you can see, we've got the money there to pay them.
This would be a dollar amount?
An additional dollar, just like we gave the police department. And as of now, Keisha has not come forward with her department, and she wants to speak on that.
My ladies are happy.
Doug, I want to round, come back around to what you said, talking about overtime. Although, if we do not increase overtime, the higher salaries will eat that up pretty quick. I mean, that's my thought, and don't tell me if I'm wrong, but like, the police department has X number of dollars, and they went over last year, and were shorthanded this year also, and won't be, eat that up probably, whatever that percentage would be quicker.
Well, when you did the, when you made up our first budget for a softer review, you, you kept the overtime in each one of the funds the same as the previous year.
Right. And now you have raised the salaries, so the overtime really needs to go up an equivalent to it.
I don't have those numbers.
I'm, I'm just saying that your overtime budget will run out a lot quicker with the higher salary, because when you call them in on overtime, you're going to be paying a lot of overtime instead of salary.
Would that be overtime in four lines?
Yeah. Police department would be line item one twelve. In your public service, there's no overtime, because it's just salary.
It might be simpler for you to go back to your financial statement and, and look at that on the page thirty. And there again, it is line number one twelve, on both the police department.
It's one twelve under your section.
I just want to throw that out there, you may see it.
Yes, but as a whole, the police department is still going to be under budget when you come down here to date.
Like I said, just a suggestion from our.
Sanitation is under budget under overtime.
It's a three thousand, and year-to-date is nineteen fifty-nine.
No. That's about what we got. We only spent a thousand forty year-to-date.
Right.
And the water department budget was seven thousand, we've only spent three thousand five ninety year-to-date. We're going to be under budget there. Sewer is over, as of right now, by five thousand eight eighty-nine. But there again, we're still going to be under budget in the sewer department quite a bit.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on ordinance zero five two zero, two zero dash one, second reading.
If you vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
Public Works Amendment?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the second amendment passing unanimously. Now, we'll move back to the ordinance, the original ordinance, zero five two zero, two zero dash one, for the year 2021. Any discussion on that? Full vote.
We've had a discussion before, and I just want to state, when I asked about salaries, we've had discussion before about breaking salaries down by hour when they're not paid by hour. I just want to state, I think that's kind of an odd thing to do, because that's not what we're going to do, but I just want to say that.
How rich and happy labor.
We're not getting hours, so we're going to get them raised another way. But I'm teaching, we don't get paid by the hour, we get no salary, therefore, we don't get hourly pay. I'm just saying, that just confuses me, and we do that, when you're breaking down a salary by hour.
I guess you're capped at forty hours.
Yeah.
But, but I agree, because I, I'd rather just be, you know, and we've talked about before, but I know it's not a discussion for now.
No.
I agree with you, because it is hard to put your head around it when it's, when you have hourly employees and you have salary employees.
Yeah.
Breaking salary down by hour is very confusing, because you got salary, you get, you get paid, no matter if you work eighty or ninety or a hundred hours in a month, so.
But, yeah, that was just my thought.
Look, I agree. I don't like it, I don't like it either, but.
That is based on forty hours, and he made, I mean, Garrett made work about eighty-five.
How we were giving that raise to salary employees, I was trying to wrap my head around that.
Maybe better if you set two thousand eighty-dollar raise on the salary, that's what it is.
Falls out.
It's wrong.
Okay.
It's just being clear on what you're doing.
Yeah.
Because you don't usually look at salary as an hour.
Right.
But that's what's, that's the saying, is given those salary personnel raise of two thousand eighty dollars a year.
Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Carter?
We are voting on the original budget with the amendments included.
To the amendments, I'm trying.
Yes.
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. The next item is second reading of ordinance zero five two zero, two zero dash two, the tax rate. I believe that is one point, one three, one eight, is what is stated in the ordinance.
I moved it with a dot ordinance, zero five two zero, two zero dash two.
A motion by Councilwoman Wilkerson, and a second by Councilman Lee, to accept the ordinance and the tax rate. We're open for discussion. Hearing united, Ms. Bishop?
Carter?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Bell?
Let the record reflect the passage unanimously for our tax rate ordinance. Moving now to new business, the first item under new business is ordinance zero six two zero, two zero dash one, for rezoning of Mill Street. This was brought to the planning commission. There were, was quite a bit of discussion at the planning commission about this, because it is going from R1 to an R2 zone. The, our state planner, the partners, and it did meet all the qualifications to be rezoned, so all the planning commission to do is make a recommendation to the council. So the recommendation is made to you for, from the planning commission to rezon the property. However, with the stipulation that there was a lot of input, as you've heard from Ms. Hoffs earlier, of course, at second reading, you have to have a public hearing if this passes tonight, so I'll entertain a motion, and you want to start?
I think we pass the ordinance zero six two zero, two zero dash one.
I say I got that motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Bell, and a second by Councilwoman Carter. We're open for discussion.
Like Ms. Hoffs brought up, she brought up the road, was that discussed in the planning?
It was discussed, but, you know, so much of that you can discuss in planning zoning.
Right.
Because this is the body that's going to provide the funds for that and make that, make that motion. But what, what I did do is I did inquire as to what the plan was for that property. And at the time, because of the planning committee, I don't believe that legally the contractor and the owner had to deposit that information. However, here, I'm not sure what, where we are with, with that. Mr. Bradley, maybe you can help, but I, I would require again, and we have two gentlemen behind us that is investing in this property, I would like to hear them, if we can, speak to what their intentions are of that property, what, or can we?
Just make a motion to suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the, the two gentlemen, I apologize for not knowing your names, because. If you don't mind, introduce yourselves to us, and tell us.
All right.
I'm sorry. Got carried away there for a minute.
All in favor of suspending the rules?
Hi.
I'm Marcus Smith, I'm at Modern Properties, and that property at Mill Street.
I'm Mitchell Lastley with Greenland Design.
If you're looking just for what we're planning on doing, basically, I bought, I bought like a ten-pack from a gentleman of Reynolds in the area, homes that he had, and he wasn't the best steward, I guess you could say, so we've gone in and remodeled about all of them, but this one, when I finally got in it, it's got a lower retention wall behind it that was leaning real bad. So when I actually got in it, noticed that the, the back and the front is leaning out to the point, I could put lipstick on a pig, or I can tear it down and actually do something nice there, so we're looking to do some multifamily there, basically whatever fits in your old regulations is what we would do. The house is right, literally right on the road, I mean, you about stick your foot out and you're in the, in the road, so I just think, anytime we can do something to help the city, you know, I'm, I'm just a big steward of cleaning this stuff up and making it look nicer, and it brings more money, and so if I can take that down, and we actually haven't got the final, I still haven't even heard what the final is, as far as how many we can get, if it's two or three or four, I don't know, as far as the answer to that.
How many families would you say would be?
I'm not sure exactly the regulations, so I can't answer that until I get more from, from the engineer on what can actually fit.
Could you have the information for second reading?
That'd be on him, so. He's an engineer.
Yeah. Well, it does, you know, the reason why we're, we need to know is because it does bring up the issue of the ability to transport down a street. And so, you know.
It's a narrow street, so we're not trying to take any partway from that.
And one thing that I thought of, and I don't even know, it's been so long since I've been down that road. Is there the ability to create a cul-de-sac in that, or is there, is there a house at the end of that road or?
There's not any dead ends of the property, so I don't think there's a cul-de-sac opportunity there unless you somehow got some of that property that I, from my understanding was for sale, I don't know if it still is or not, but at one point it was. I know there's a new, one duplex or two duplexes on your right. And then there's two houses on the left, I believe, and then there's the lady lives on the corner and then on the other corner, right, you turn in, there's two there. And then the house I've got that I would tear down or love to see it just for aesthetics and that kind of thing. But if it's a no, I'll put lipstick on a pig and move on, you know.
Well, just speaking, since we've altered the rules, you know, I appreciate any contractor that's coming to the city and, and remodeling a piece or creating a piece that's gonna be aesthetically pleasing to our city.
Yeah.
It's gonna be value to the residents for other structures. So I, I'm all for that. But you know, the hidden cost is something that we'll definitely have to look at. Hopefully, we can get, get past that small problem to create something better for us.
I might point out also that this street is served with a four-inch water line. There's a hydrant down at Pleasant Grove Road, but I think there may be a blow-off hydrant up at the top. That acreage you was just speaking of, I heard it had already sold, so.
This will not be going back before planning is on it before?
It's up to the council to, only the council can rezon the property.
Yeah, I knew that, but I didn't know if they had more discussion at planning zoning than not.
State plan okay to plan, right?
Oh, she basically said that it met the recommendation for rezoning. Our pre-planning permit guy called it spot zoning. And when he originally said something about it, he was against it. He said that spot zoning was not really a good thing. But Westmoreland has broke up into so many different, different areas of zoning. And the planning commission is, we're actually looking at pulling all the ordinances since two thousand and ten and doing an updated map for Westmoreland, so. We don't, we don't have one now. The latest one is printing in two thousand eleven, I think, so.
I didn't really think I was asking for a special exception just because I had joined duplexes that were newly built within the last couple of months, so I didn't think I stepped outside anything.
It's an R1 zone and in an R1 zone duplexes are allowed.
Okay.
So that, that tells us from looking at the ordinances, you're wanting to do something more multifamily than just.
Just whatever will fit there, yeah, this is a larger lot, so there can be further there or whatever.
The planner told us that single-wide mobile homes could go into that, which I don't think you're interested in putting a single-wide mobile home in.
No, I'm not interested in that.
Yep, single-wide can go in R2. It's medium, goes to medium density, R1 is low density and R2 is medium density. So once you rezon it, if, if he decided to sell it, then whoever bought it says, I'm gonna put a single-wide mobile home in here. They could actually do it, you couldn't do anything. So.
Is there a size requirement for that by chance? I know in Megan County, you have to have two acres to be able to put in the city or out of the city.
No, and if.
Maybe something y'all would consider?
With sewer available, R2 only requires, I think, nine thousand square feet. And I think you made it very well, but so.
Just saying, moving forward for you guys, I'm, been on city council over there for eight years, so I'm kind of, I dance this dance a bunch, so.
Yeah, we, now having the county, there's different regulations.
There is, yeah, I was on county commission.
Okay, so what's the place on R1?
R1, we've got the book in front of me, it's single, single homes, detached dwellings, duplexes with special exceptions, you do church school. I'll bring a zone in with me when we come for second reading.
I just wondered what's the difference between the two orders, right?
But as far as meeting, the stipulations as far as the state planner goes, the recommendation was brought to the city council.
Mayor, you're saying the single-wide could be put on R2 but not R1?
Correct.
Here with the R1 is less dense. I can't imagine putting three families in a single-wide, right, but that doesn't make sense to me.
No, now you can put a double-wide manufactured home in R1 but not a single-wide.
Very inconsistent.
Well, if the R1 is, is low density, meaning, you know, single-family housing, dwellings like that, medium density, more people. So you know.
The double-wide will hold more people than the single-wide, so it seems backwards.
Yeah. One of the things, I need to go back and look at, look at the ordinances for that.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's gotta be the top of our list in July, maybe.
Can I talk about that at the next debate session, too?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? This is for first reading, I'd like to say that we'll take two readings to change it plus a public hearing, so.
Do we need to make a motion to re-suspend the rules or?
No, you've already got a motion to adopt, you, you don't need to do anything there, you're, you're back to the session.
Just go ahead and call, call for all.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Uh, Mr. President, can I make, can I just state that there's conflict, maybe a conflict of interest there and still vote? My son owns Greenland Design, but I have no connection to it.
Yes, you can make that, you have an indirect conflict, they're gonna vote your conscience.
Okay, all right. I have an indirect, indirect conflict here, but still gonna vote on this, and I'm gonna vote yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Let the motion show be first reading, passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Next item on the agenda is to hire Cody Hammett for a full-time public works position.
I'll move we hired him.
Councilman Bell makes a motion, is that Councilman Lee on second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Is this for full-time, I'm sorry, is this full-time? Has he been working part-time, maybe?
No, ma'am. He's currently had another job and he didn't want to take the pay cut to come as part-time.
He's worked for the city of what, Portland before you say?
Yes, sir.
What rate of pay is he coming in at? Is he getting this two dollars, what's he coming in at?
Well, it won't take effect until July one.
He's coming in standard.
He'll be coming in twelve.
I think the, the numbers were based on having another body.
Okay, I had the fact.
As full-time, yeah.
I was wondering where he was coming in on this.
And, and the numbers were based on at least, no, two part-times. And we, do we have any part-times now at all?
No.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that.
Hope so.
July one.
Mr. Cusick, your call for ordinance.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, agenda is water line extension on Henry Harris Road. Is Richard Graves?
Well, very interesting, the water line on Redcoats Road, Mr. Graves has contacted me and wanted to bring it before the council. He is requesting to extend that line about eight hundred feet up Henry Harris Road, which that really fits with our master plan and it just puts us a few years ahead of schedule and tying in some of those dead end lines out there, looking them. So if you have something to add additionally to it?
To suspend the rules.
We'll get a motion and so we can discuss.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Yeah, I'm Richard Graves, seventeen sixty-eight, New Highway fifty-two, Westmoreland, Tennessee. Myself and James Ripley, James Ripley owns a property across the road from me and we don't, we don't have water. And in talking to most others, they thought that they would get this line put in to loop, to get the loop completed on Henry Harris. Since they didn't get it in this, in this phase, we would like, like to extend the line up there like about eight hundred fifty feet to our properties. And of course, our own expense and we'll take care of doing the engineering and everything. So we would just ask if y'all could give us each a tab if that would be permissible, but you know, but we really would like the, the line to get water to our properties.
And what size line?
Six inch. I think y'all got an ordinance against anything less, I think.
Correct. So how about a fire hydrant, is that something that would be required in that, really, flat, mayor?
I would allow a blow-off, but I would really prefer if the city could try to find some money soon, maybe the next budget year to try to join that line, because it would help tremendously with the water pressure throughout Redcoats and on Henry Harris, plus it would cut down a lot on the water at the dead end lines, which would be Mr. Graves' property and the other end of Henry Harris Road. You're looking at, you know, you have, it'd cut down a lot of flushing because the water would continuously circulate, so that would save us water over the years. I, I don't believe that it would be in the budget right now to, to do it, to connect it with all the other water line extension projects that we have going on right now. But, but yes, I would allow a blow-off on that and not require a hydrant. It, as far as the tabs go, in my opinion, I don't see any issues with it, especially being that they're gonna be putting the bill for the line and that's gonna be quite a, quite a good sized bill, and I know we've done it in the past, so. As long as everything will, after they do the engineering and everything, it will have to be passed by T-Dade. And as long as T-Dade approves it, it could be good to go on my end.
We did that on Barrett Carter, that guy out there?
Also, I'd say, I'm sorry, give me an interrupt, one more thing, I'll take care of getting you the easement across it. We got one of the property owners between us and Redcoats Road and he's agreed to let us have an easement. So I'll, I'll survey that easement and get it to John where we can get it to the city where it'll be, where it'll be official. And across James, it'll actually be on James' side of the road, I'll have to punch him to my side.
Mr. Graves, our line currently stops at the Ms. Rogers', she's not Rogers now, that's what I know, Ms. Rogers' property. How far is it from where we stop down to where you wanna stop?
It's about nineteen hundred and fifty feet later, that's what I measured the other day, right at nineteen hundred feet. So it's, it's about, it's about a little over half a mile, right at a half mile total of line there.
So if we connected them, that's what we would?
Be about nineteen fifty.
Aaron, what is size line, is it down to Ms. Rogers?
It's a, it's a two inch out here. And if we could tie that six inch into the two inch, and here's another thing that we have an issue with. The water line extension that's going down Redcoats that he'll be tying into is a six inch line. But it's tied in to a four inch line out on the main highway. So if we could tie that, that two inch on Henry Harris into that, that's really gonna help with water pressure out in that area because as of right now, we're going from a four to a six. And what that's gonna do is it's gonna drop the pressure instead of increase it. If it was going the opposite way, the pressure would go up. But, and we're gonna have a lot of issues with air in the lines and stuff down there. Chris and I have been kind of preparing for that because there's only gonna be, the county was only letting us one fire hydrant and it's gonna be in the dead center of that Redcoats line. And where it's a four inch on each end, it's, it's gonna cause a little bit of pressure issues and stuff. It will still be, will still meet the requirements that we have, the twenty psi requirement, I have no doubt about that. But if we could tie that extra line in, and then in the future, you know, the mayor and I both talked about, you know, we would really like to tie in Bishop Trout in the other road down through there. But if we could get that extra half a mile, the sooner the better. I mean, that's gonna be our closest, closest one to tie in with. That would make things a lot better out in that whole entire area as far as quality of water and water pressure as well.
And how many taps would you be?
Just one for me and one for him is all we're.
Of the two taps?
Yeah. Yes. And I've not, I had, I talked to James, of course, he's farming, you know, they love the daughter. But I, I think that me and him talked about the easement on up, on up across Tim, and I think the only person would be left would be Ms. Rogers' property to get an easement to tie into that. She paid, did she pass the law?
Yes, she did.
Just to tie into that two inch, because it's on the east side of her property, on, on the west, yeah, Westmoreland side of her property.
It ends right there.
It ends right there at her property line, yeah, so. But I don't think James would have the problem, I can't speak for him, but I'll tell you, you know, by giving an easement along the right way of, I don't know, so y'all, if you ever do extend it, it'll be in good place.
Are we ready for a motion here?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to allow this extension on Henry Harris Road be done by, by Mr. Graves and Mr. Ripley. They're paying the bill and putting up.
Blow-off.
A what?
A blow-off.
Blow-off at the end of the line.
And the two taps?
And if they get, yeah, if they get two taps for running this, and that is be done by stakes picks.
You might also want to include in that motion that he will acquire the, the necessary easements.
Do we need to put a time frame on these two taps? You know, we've done that before.
I imagine you want to put a band as soon as you get a line, right?
Okay, so that's gonna be right away?
Six, six months from the time the line is installed?
Excuse me.
We've let some go in the past, our previous history has let it go in the past and then when current council's sitting here, nobody can find any records of where we said, the city said they can have free taps.
Correct, correct. We'll go ahead and put them in.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cusick?
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Lee?
Again, I got an indirect conflict of interest here, but you're going to vote, that's not going to design or call this, that's thing, so yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. Oh, I think that is everything on the agenda, have I missed anything?
I think you got it.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Still moves.